The LSU Board of Supervisors will now come to order. Ms. Marilyn, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Starnes.
Present.
Ms. Jones. Mr. Dampf.
Here.
Mr. Armenter.
Here.
Ms. Aronson.
Here.
Mr. Blossman. Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Mallett. Mr. Morris. Mr. Morrow.
Here.
Ms. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Temple.
Here.
Ms. Werner.
Here.
Mr. Williams. Mr. Wood.
Here.
Mr. Zuschla.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, there's a call.
Thank you, Ms. Marilyn. We'll begin with the invocation and pledge. Today's invocation will be given by Brandon Legrome. Brandon is a junior in Mass Communication, a board scholarship recipient, supervisor and Chair-elect Lindsey Jones, and a member of the President's Millennial Scholars Program. Then, our LSU student body president, fellow supervisor Lizzie Shaw, will join the Southern University Student Body President, Carlos Brister, in leaving the pledge. Ms. Legrome?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me today. Precious and beloved God, our source and our creator, your word tells us to enter into your gates with thanksgiving and your courts with praise. So, Father, we thank you for being omnipotent, omniscient, and omnipresent. We know who you are and we acknowledge your sovereignty in this moment. We call upon you as the creation of your hand, asking that you open our hearts to receive the strength, courage, and compassion required to fulfill the work at hand. We pray that you continue to give the Board of Supervisors your supernatural wisdom in their policymaking for the betterment of this university. That President William Tate and his team continues to lead boldly and selfishly. That our faculty will see the impact that they've made with their teaching. May the staff never lack the support that they give to us beyond measure. And we pray that for the protection of the student body, both on and off campus, that our educational efforts and even journeys post-college are divinely positioned in a place that gives us a comparative advantage and competitive edge, knowing that because we've asked, we have received. And for that, we are grateful. Amen.
Don't go off too far, Mr. Legrome. We're going to talk to you in a second. Ms. Shaw?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, Mr. Legrome. Mr. Legrome. So, tell us where you're from.
I'm from Memphis, Tennessee.
And when did you start at LSU?
Um, fall 2020.
And your study of mass communication?
Yes, sir.
What's the plan?
Um, hopefully, I can get a job being a forward correspondent, going overseas, you know, reporting back here. So, that's the goal.
Thank you for being with us.
Thank you for having me.
Good luck with your studies.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is public comment. We have no one ready for public comment. But let me say, conducting a public business at a public meeting is a very, very important part of the democratic process, an important part of being a public body. And public comment is a sacred component of public meetings. And I'm very proud that here at LSU, we show respect to people who come and give public comment. And I appreciate the interaction. So, with that, without objection, I move to recess the full board meeting and call, ask Supervisor Werner to call the committee, the Research and Agricultural Extension Committee, to order. And I'll say, as chairman, creating the Research and Ag Extension Committee, one of my favorite things that we've done, because I think it's extremely important to the health, well-being of Louisiana State University, that we promote those concepts in everything that we do. And I thank you, Supervisor Werner, for taking that responsibility on as chair. And this time, would you please call it to order?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for allowing me to serve as the first chair of this committee. And it's so appropriate that we wrap up your term with agriculture and our rice breeding. So, Mrs. Marilyn, on that note, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Werner?
Here.
Ms. Aronson?
Here.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Morris?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Temple?
Here.
Madam Chairman, there's a call.
Thank you. I'd now like to invite our chancellor, Matt Lee, to introduce the presenter that will speak about LSU Ag Center, Rice Breeding and Genetics, something very near and dear to my heart.
Thank you, Supervisor Werner. Supervisors, LSU agriculture is a world leader in crop breeding generally and specifically in the rice variety development. Over the years, we have developed 60 or more varieties of rice that are used across the globe, providing a significant foundation for global food security. We're able to achieve this level of notoriety partly because of our world-class facility in the H. Rouse Caffey Rice Field Station and partly because of the elite scientific talent we are able to attract and retain. So, today, I am pleased to introduce to you Dr. Adam Famoso. Dr. Famoso is the H. Rouse Caffey Endowed Professor of Biological and Agricultural Engineering. He's an applied rice breeder and geneticist focused on developing superior rice varieties and improved germplasm for Louisiana and the southern U.S. He earned his PhD in 2010 from Cornell in Plant Breeding and Genetics. He's been with LSU since 2015. In the last four years, due to his elite scientific program, he has attracted $4 million in funding to the university to support his work. And he's here today to share with us some of his recent research on rice breeding and genetics here at the LSU Ag Center.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Today, I'm going to speak, I was asked to speak on agricultural genetics. And so, as a rice breeder, I want to try to talk about what we do in genetics and how we apply that to rice, rice breeding, and the mission that we try to serve at our research station. First, a little background on the H. Rouse Caffey Rice Research Station. We're located in Crowley, Louisiana, just north of the interstate. It's been there for over 100 years. So, we're the longest, most, longest-running rice research facility in the world. That little graph there shows you what the yields of rice have done in the state over the past 100 years. And we intend to ensure that that line continues to increase like that. The station, we have three main focuses, all centered around research, extension, and teaching. And the activities that we conduct at the research station really have not changed in the last 100 years. Certainly, the ways we go about doing things have changed, but the activities and the focus have really not changed in terms of breeding, agronomy, pathology, insects, entomology, biotechnology, weed science, and certainly crawfish. So, my main focus is in rice breeding. The number-one objective of our program is to develop new and improved varieties. These are intended to be grown by our producers in Louisiana and neighboring states. I think this past year, 60% of the acres grown in Louisiana are varieties that have come out of our program and our station. So, we are very, very applied. And what we're focused on doing is putting things into farmers' fields that are going to help support our industry. Our primary stakeholders and supporters are, number one, the rice growers. We work very, very closely with these rice growers. They give us a lot of support. And they also give us a lot of direction of what they need us to do. We also work very closely with the industry, whether that's seed dealers, other companies who license and market our materials, or that we have collaborative research endeavors with. And then last, the rice millers, purchasers, exporters, and end-users. They give us a lot of feedback and direction on what the market needs, both domestically and the export market. Our breeding priorities, so what's important for us in our breeding program? There's two major priorities. First is profitability of our growers as well as our industry. And the second is sustainability. And sustainability in compasses, both environmental, we want to produce more rice with less inputs, but also economic stability to ensure, sustainability to ensure that our rice industry remains strong and competitive. So, I'm going to jump into some details of how we conduct a rice breeding program or typical breeding program, and then give an example of what some of the modern genetic tools allow us to do and how that's really a big step change on what we're capable of doing. So, the graphic on the left side depicts a breeding program. So, in a breeding program, we take two desirable lines, maybe high yield, high quality, and cross those together. And the goal is to get something that's better than the parents. We make about 300 of these such crosses each year. And they go through this pipeline. And this pipeline is depicted as a funnel because at the top of that pipeline, we might be evaluating literally hundreds of thousands of potential experimental lines. And each year, we throw some away that don't perform. And at the end of this process, we hope to have something that's useful for the market. This is typically a six-to-nine-year process from the time we begin until something is released. And on the right side of that funnel, you see a little schematic of investment per entry. That is to represent how much resources, time, money, space goes into evaluating things at each stage. So, at those beginning stages, it might be less than a dollar per entry to evaluate it. Those later stages, it's tens of thousands of dollars to evaluate it. So, the major bottlenecks of what we're trying to do, essentially, we always want to try to look at more. We want to make this process faster. And we want to do it more accurately. So, one tool to do this is to use modern tools. And certainly, genetic tools are a great resource for us. So, I'm going to give a case study example, case example of, an example of how we've done this. And it's just one example. There's many others that we put all together to develop new varieties. So, the example I'm going to use is a disease. Narrow brown leaf spot is a fungal disease that infects the... Pictures aren't showing up. It's a fungal disease that infects the leaf and the stem. And it can cause significant reductions in yield and in grain quality. So, the way we went about doing this was we did field evaluations, looked at literally hundreds of, or tens of thousands of rows over years, and identified, you know, some varieties or some lines are resistant and some are susceptible. Then, we went in and we sequenced the genomes of about 380 of these lines. So, the genome is 400 million individual base pairs. We went in, look at these regions, and identify the differences. And then, we associate these regions to see, are there any parts of the genome that all the susceptible lines look similar and the resistant lines look similar? And this schematic shows a big peak there. Those are different chromosomes. So, now, we know, okay, there's something on chromosome two that is associated with disease or susceptibility. And then, we go into that region and we look at individual base pairs where we can look and see specifically out of those 400-plus million sites, what is the one that we can utilize to determine ahead of time if a line is going to be resistant or susceptible? And based on that, good, at least this one's here. This is an important one. Based on this, we can look and say, okay, well, what if we look across hundreds or thousands of lines? How well does it predict? So, on the graph, on the right side, it says resistant marker. And there's hundreds of lines in there, but they're all resistant. On the left side, it's susceptible marker. And you see that they range from, some are resistant, but most are susceptible. And the table just shows the same thing, basically, almost 100% accuracy. If we can look at that and say, look at the DNA of that plant, we can predict if it's going to be resistant to this line, or, I'm sorry, to this disease. So, when we go back and say, okay, well, how does that really impact our rice breeding or the varieties that we release to the growers? Now, we're able to go in and grow seedlings a few inches tall, take a pinch of leaf, and run it through the lab and predict ahead of time, is it going to be resistant to this disease? We also can do this for grain quality, other diseases, and other important attributes. This costs us about $2.50 per sample. Whereas I mentioned, the things in that funnel, they're on the order of dollars. It's much more accurate. So, in the case of disease, we're stuck, we're limited to the disease being present. Some years, the disease is not present. So, you can't select on those lines. So, it's more accurate. And it's a lot faster. We can run upwards of 40,000 samples through our lab each day to really crank through things. So, it allows us to look at more lines more accurately and for a much lower cost. And in addition to that, when we get into the more advanced stages, we're only putting and investing into evaluating these advanced lines only for the lines that we already know are going to be suitable for the disease resistance or the grain quality. So, with that, I'm going to stop. I have a lot of people that contribute to this work. Just say, the work we do at the Rice Research Station really is focused for our growers and our end-users. There's a lot of people out there doing a lot of good work and a lot of hard work. For this, I just want to recognize the graduate student who led this work, Christopher Addison. He is currently a cotton breeder, a Corteva Agri-science. But he led a lot of this work. So, with that, thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions? Dr. Tate?
Thank you for a wonderful presentation. I don't want to put you on the spot in front of your head of ag. But I do, and would appreciate hearing from the lens of a faculty member, what are the kinds of things we can be doing to support you advancing this extremely important research? And don't hold back. I mean, what do you need to be the very... And I consider this to be elite research. What do you need to be the best in the world at this?
Yeah. One, from a non-academic thing, like I mentioned, having good staff is absolutely critical. And being able to get good staff, and I'm not talking faculty, but there's a lot of boots on the ground to make this work happen. So, hiring people, but also being able to compensate them to retain those people is an ongoing challenge. From a faculty standpoint or research standpoint, I think the industry or this field is translating. We're creating more and more data. So, the skill sets that we need, skill sets that I do not have, so, you know, I've been out of grad school for 15 years. So, it evolves so quickly. It's more about data and computational skills. And so, we do a lot to try to fill in those gaps. We've recently hired a new faculty member out there. But I think that's the direction the field's going is not just generating data. It's sifting through that data, interpreting that data, and then putting all those pieces together to deploy that into a useful product.
So, when you say that, oftentimes, people might think you're talking about traditional statisticians. I do not get the impression that's what you mean when you say this.
Certainly, traditional statisticians are important. But no, it's more big data. So, just as an example, the faculty member we just hired, the needs he had for computational space. We're a research station in Crowley, Louisiana, and we had to buy a computer server and a place to store that server. And so, it's a different set of skills. The skills that, the skills that we've used in the past are still important. But to build these things, we need to bring in other disciplines. So, computational skill sets might be things in predictive ag, drones, things of that nature.
So, if the university had a more expanded program that was integrated, it would help you?
Absolutely.
Thank you. You just got a promotion.
Okay. Very good. I'll follow up with you on that next week. Thank you.
Before you go, before you go. First of all, thank you. Does anyone have any other questions or comments? I personally want to thank you for coming. I personally know the work that goes on there and how impactful it is for rice farmers across all of Louisiana, but also what we share worldwide. If any of my fellow supervisors have not had the chance to attend Rice Field Day, it's a very hot day in June usually. But you are, it's amazing the community that comes together, everything that you all show us, take us out to see, display, and then the international presence that is pre-COVID usually. But now, we're getting back to the researchers and growers that come from around the world to see the work being done in Crowley at LSU. And so, I want to thank you for that and acknowledge to everyone here the tremendous work because we know rice is a fundamental food source across the globe and that Louisiana and LSU is leading in the research on this. So, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We have no other business in front of the committee. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second? No opposition. Committee is adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Werner. And I'm enormously proud of the accomplishments in our research and agricultural extension field. That was very exciting to hear about what's going on in terms of rice growing. I know we've talked about the localized emicryse that LSU helped invent. And it's just very exciting that we're leading in a very important area. And I want to see that continue. Supervisor Armentor, would you, thank you for chairing the academic committee. Would you please convene that academic committee?
Sir, Mr. Chair. Marilyn, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Armenter?
Here.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Mr. Dampf?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, there's a call.
Thank you, ma'am. The academic committee will now call on our new provo, Dr. Roy Hagerty, to present the first item.
Thank you, Supervisor Armentor. The first item on the agenda is a request to approve a tuition increase for the University Laboratory School. The plan is to implement a phased tuition increase over the next two academic years. $500 in calendar year 2023-24 and another $500 in the next academic year, 24-25. This tuition increase will amount to a $1.8 million increase in revenue for the school, which will be used for teacher salary adjustments, technology programs, and other items over the next five to 10 years. The University Lab School last implemented a tuition increase eight years ago in 2016. Thank you for your consideration of this item.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve the item?
The move.
Mr. Morrow, a second by Mr. Dampf. Any objection? There being none, the motion carries. We'll next go to the consent agenda, where we have several business items that include the continuation of the Stevenson Disaster Management Institute, establishment and naming of scholarships at LSU-E. A request from LSU-A to name their business foundation conference room. A request from LSU-A&amp;M to convert the Herman Moise Junior Louisiana Bankers Association Chair of Banking into two endowed professorships. Chairman Starnes would like that. And in addition to the LSU campus's three-year academic plan. Dr. Hagerty, would you expand on those items?
Thank you, Supervisor Armentor. The consent agenda includes a request from LSU for a five-year continued authorization of the Stevenson Disaster Management Institute, or SDMI. or SDMI. Over the last five years, SDMI has been responsible for generating $10,293,893 in research grants and contracts with federal, state, local, and private sector entities for LSU, and has maintained 100% sustainability through self-generated funding for the last seven years. Next, we have two requests from LSU-UNIS. First is a request to establish Margaret Edwards Nursing Scholarship. William and Joanne Ziegler generously donated $10,000 to the LSU-E Foundation to establish a non-endowed scholarship fund to honor their close friend. We also have a request to establish a non-endowed scholarship fund for the benefit of LSU-UNIS student athletes made possible by multiple generous donors. Generally, scholarships will be $2,500 and awarded to full-time student athletes attending LSU-E. Next, we have a naming request from LSU Alexandria. In honor of and appreciation of a $600,000 donation by the Alexandria Business Foundation for Board of Regents Endowed Chair to strengthen and grow the LSU-A College of Business, LSU-A, upon recommendation from the president of the LSU-A Foundation and in conjunction with the dean of the College of Business, requests the naming of the first-floor conference room in the new Student Success Center to be the Alexandria Business Foundation Conference Room. Next, we have a request from LSU to convert the Herman Moes Junior Louisiana Bankers Association Chair of Banking into two professorships in order to more effectively utilize the funds. The college requests that the $700,000 professorship be named the Herman Moes Junior Louisiana Bankers Association Professorship in Financial Services, and that the $300,000 professorship be named the Herman Moes Junior Louisiana Bankers Association Professorship in Banking. Lastly, LSU requests an approval of an addition to the academic plan for year one to include the following programs: Master of Interior Design and Graduate Health Certificate in Healthcare Design Innovation. This addition would be included in the LSU's 2023-26 Academic Plan to the Board of Regents. Supervisor Armentor?
Thank you, Dr. Haggerty. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Mr. Morrow and Mr. Williams, second. Thank you very much. Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Do I have a motion to adjourn the committee? Ms. Shaw?
Second.
And Ms. Jones, a second. Any objection? There being none, the academic committee is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Armentor.
Supervisor Brown, thank you very much for chairing the finance committee. Would you please call it to order?
Thank you.
Uh, Marilyn, would you call it to order, please?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Ms. Arrington?
Here.
Mr. Blossman? Mr. Mallett? Ms. Werner?
Here.
Mr. Zuschlo?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, there's a question.
Thank you. Uh, in your first item of business, your budget, and you have a copy, I believe, everyone has a copy in their package, I believe, uh, okay, PowerPoint. Uh, Ms. Lewis, would you, uh, please, uh, for a sec?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Good afternoon, everyone. You have in your packet a PowerPoint presentation to walk through the operating budget for fiscal year 2023, as well as some budget priorities for the upcoming fiscal year. I'm sorry, the next fiscal year. Just to remind everyone of the budget cycle. This meeting, we will go through the approval process for the current year budget and the next year's budget. This will leave us and go to the Board of Regents. From the Board of Regents, it will go to the Division of Administration for inclusion in the Governor's Executive Budget, which will be presented to the legislature in late January, early February. From there, we'll go through the legislative process, and we will be back here again next summer for implementation. We just finished the closeout of last fiscal year, and we are back starting with a new budget cycle. To go through what our primary budget cost drivers, our pressures and our priorities are, the next page, mandated costs, of course, being retirement, our group health insurance, which I think last, I guess it was the June meeting, we had a presentation on LSU First, which is our insurance provider. We also have employees that participate in the Office of Group Benefits Health Plans. We have our classified staff merit increases and other state agency charges, for example, the CPTP program, which is Continuing Education Program for state employees, as well as legislative auditor expenses. One of the other cost drivers and things that is very important, staff compensation and faculty compensation, being able to increase those. You just heard the presentation, and when the president asked the question, having good staff and compensation for that staff is very important. That is what takes us from being elite to being the best in the world. Compensating our staff is critical. Compensating our faculty is critical. Not just being at the average of the SRAB, but exceeding that average is important. And when we talk about staff compensation, having our staffing with solutions so that we're paying a livable wage is also important. Not simply paying $8 or $9 an hour, but getting our staffing level and our wages above $15 an hour is very important for all of our campuses. That is one of the funding priorities in the budget proposal we're presenting for the next fiscal year. We should not have staff members who cannot afford to pay for their health insurance, nor should we have staff members who cannot afford to pay for their food. So those staffing priorities and being able to recruit staff that come here and will stay here once they're here. Our facilities are, of course, a cost driver and priorities, both the deferred maintenance. But we're, as a system, we're at $1 billion in deferred maintenance. The Baton Rouge campus, $636 million in deferred maintenance. We also have safety and accessibility improvements that have to be made. Safety, both from the fire marshal's perspective, ingress and egress, how we access the buildings, how we protect our students in the event there are things that require us to evacuate, but also ADA, accessibility, and compliance on all of our campuses are very critical. So those are very important. They are priorities for us, and they are things that you will see in our capital outlay acts and things that we are working on currently. IT infrastructure is just as important as the physical infrastructure. We're continuing our ERP upgrades with our new student information system and some continued improvements to our finance system. And we're continuing to implement the technology necessary to support our research portfolio. You cannot do the data analysis that was just discussed if we do not have the technology to do it, and you also cannot offer the online classes that Mr. Brown has been talking about if we do not have the online validity necessary. So those are all critical, both cost drivers and priorities for us. And lastly, just to highlight the academic and research priorities, everyone has heard constantly, and you all have been sharing and speaking about our Scholarship First Initiative and our NCI designation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for always speaking about the NCI designation. We also have continued investment to expand our research across the system. We cannot have the type of research that the Ag Center just presented if we do not make those investments. Focusing on graduate education, if we do not invest in our graduate education program, investing in PhD students, we will not have the world-class university that everyone in this room expects us to have. We have to meet our academic program demands for strategic expansion. When you have $1 billion in deferred maintenance, it's very hard to invest in everything at once, so we have to be strategic in those investments. Focusing on STEM and STEAM initiatives, and then we have to continue to maintain our statewide extension presence. The Ag Center is here today, so I did not plan that, but having an extension office in every parish in the state, we have to continue to maintain that presence because having LSU in every parish in the state is very important, being able to reach our citizens both with what our Ag Center offers, but having that presence so that LSU is there for all of our citizens to protect and serve is critical. So those, again, are cost drivers, but those are also priorities that we have to focus on. Moving on to the state funding formula allocations. This is a breakdown in the change in the formula from this past year, just so that you see, there was a $17 million increase in our formula funding across all of our campuses, and that's a breakdown across each of the four major campuses. And we did have specialized units that received additional funding, and I gave detailed information in your packets for each of the campuses, including the health science centers. This is just a high-level overview to go through. On the operating budget, just a breakdown of where our funding comes from. The general fund dollars at 14%, student fees are 24%, auxiliaries 9%, gifts, grants, and contracts at 33%. Some of our other sources of funding include Hill, endowment incomes, statutory dedications, and sales and services.
Ms. Lewis, just a question. Student fees includes tuition and fees, right? They're not?
Correct. Not apart. Our total budgeted revenue by campus, just a breakdown between the restricted revenue and the unrestricted, and I won't go into all of that detail. Something about rain in this room makes me worry that our infrastructure won't hold up. The last time I was going through a presentation, it started raining in this room, the lights went out. Just in terms of, just because the unrestricted revenue, meaning can be used for all sources of expenditures, student fees being tuition and fees as well as general fund dollars, just to highlight Ms. Williams' last question, we are primarily funded by our tuition and fee revenue versus the general fund, which is something the chairman has always focused on, on that chart. And our expenditures, the bulk of our expenditures are, again, personal services, so our faculty and staff make up the bulk of our costs. And this is just a chart that kind of breaks out where we're spending those other dollars, institutional support, student services, on research, and on instructional dollars. And then the last few pages give you our peer comparisons. So you can see between fiscal year 2008 and fiscal year 2020, just a comparison of LSU and a percentage of our SEC peers. So on the left, you'll see the state appropriations per full-time student in 2008, and then in 2020 is the goal, just so you can kind of see the difference as to our peers versus us, and that we have had a significant decrease in comparison to our peers. And the other pages are our other campuses, LSU-A, S, and E, in terms of comparison to their peer institutions. And the last page is just the numerical comparisons across those institutions, our full-time students.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, any questions for Ms. Lewis?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and thank you for that, Ms. Lewis. And seeing those peer funding comparisons is heartbreaking to me. And we have to do better in Louisiana, do better at LSU, and we need to really focus on ways to fund this university appropriately, fully, and I think we, this should be a major focus of what we do going forward. You mentioned the PhD program scholarships, and I, we were going to address that in the Board of Supervisors Scholarship Program on the agenda, but this is a better time to speak about it. That is exactly right. We, as part of funding the university properly, also, we need to focus on attracting and sustaining top-level professional and graduate students. And we need to be able to recruit and to compete against other flagship universities around the country. And we have to get our funding situation right. We have to get a lot of situations right to be able to do that. It's, it's just heartbreaking to see that funding comparison to me. With that, I would like to see, and first, I want to thank Governor John Bill Edwards for his prioritizing higher education, and our legislature for the appropriations they've made. We are doing better than we have before, and I'd like to see that reflected in the way we compete for students in Louisiana and elsewhere, and the way that we award scholarships to students, PhD and graduate and professional students. So, chief amongst them. So I know that we've talked about this before, but I would like to see a complete study, a holistic approach to the best ways to accomplish those things. So, but thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Stornz. Other questions or comments from the board, the committee, the board? I, I would just add to what Ms. Stornz says. I, we really need to thank our governor, we need to thank our legislators. We have been able to give back to the staff raises, so that's, that's wonderful. Keep, we need to work on keeping it up, move forward. I appreciate the good, detailed work and the very nice presentation that you presented, Ms. Lewis. Thank you so much. If there are no other questions, or, yes, sir? Ms. Stornz, what? One of the, go ahead. What's the question? Uh, that's all property. We're, well, we do, but I want to, I think we need to vote on accepting this, correct? Mr. Winston's, need a vote?
The board needs to approve the budget.
Okay. The committee will, will now vote on the approval of the budget. All those in favor? Or is any opposition? Was there? Was there a motion? Thank you, sir.
Make a motion.
Got a motion. Stornz, yes, but, uh, I don't, Ms. Werner, second, okay. Any, any opposition? All in favor? It passes. Thank you. Yes, we do have another item, supplier diversity update. Ms. Lewis, thank you.
Yes. So in your packets, you also have the quarterly supplier diversity spin report for the period ending June 30th. You will note that we have provided a comparison of the LSU campus as well as the health science centers, and you will see that we have some increased spend numbers across those campuses. What I want to point out is that the Supplier Diversity Office did purchase and has started utilizing Supplier IO software and working with all of the campuses using that software.
I think we have, the only document I have related to that is the one page, is that the one you were referring to?
I'm sorry, I provided the supplier diversity report to the board office.
It's in an electronic packet.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Electronic packet, I'm sorry.
No problem. All right, thank you.
But if you want to follow along on the online, I'm sorry, Mr. Williams. But, so utilizing Supplier IO, that software is in use. In addition to utilizing that software, the staff has begun working with events outreach to include working with the Baton Rouge Area Chamber, the Baton Rouge Procurement Opportunities Partnership, meeting with both of our major vendors, working on the charity hospital and the utilities modernization project. They've also been working to hold events such as a supplier diversity event that was held here at the PMAC, which was very well attended by diverse suppliers, as well as our on-campus buyers and purchasers. They have worked with our Department of Transportation, our Department of Economic Development, the Louisiana Small Business Administration as far as outreach and expanding our efforts to reach diverse suppliers. They are also working on the University-Lakes partnership to ensure that we have diverse suppliers participating in that project, and continuing to identify ways that we can assist diverse suppliers. One of the challenges that has been identified is our insurance requirements for persons coming on campus to do work, so ways that we can make it a little bit easier for small businesses to come on campus. It's sometimes difficult to meet the million-dollar, two-million-dollar thresholds for insurance to do camp, work on campus, as well as some of the bonding issues that suppliers have. If you're a small business, to meet some of those requirements. So they are identifying issues that we'll continue to work with to address some of those. They've launched a diverse supplier request form to provide diverse supplier recommendations to departments for procurement. They've updated the supplier diversity website to provide more information and tools, and continued, for example, to present at different events around campus to make sure that the campus is aware of the diverse suppliers and their ability to purchase and the use of diverse suppliers and all contracting opportunities on campus. One of the other things that we've recognized is our need to expand the staff in the supplier diversity area, and we will be doing that in this upcoming fiscal year, so that not only are we looking at how we can do outreach, but how we can better do outreach with a broader staff to do the work. The team that does the work that has been accomplished- The team that does the work that has been accomplished is here, and they are doing a yeoman's job in doing so. So Tyler Kearney, Michelle Montero, and Tiffany Robinson are in the back, and they're hoping that, I don't ask them to get up and say a word, they've asked me about that for two weeks, so we have to be there, and we have to speak, but I do want to acknowledge the great work that they do and that they have done since I've been here in February, continuing to focus on supplier diversity. When I say get out, and, and Brandon Smith, making sure that he is engaged in assisting, getting our supplier diversity team out, making sure they are introduced to all of the community partnership relationships, and that everywhere there is an event, that our supplier diversity team is out and being introduced to the business community and engaging and interacting and participating, so that everyone knows that LSU has a supplier diversity initiative, and that we intend to have supplier diversity in all of our contracting, including an update on recent awards that have diverse suppliers, exceeding five hundred thousand, Garden Doctors for Groundskeeping, Stratus Elevators for our elevator maintenance, and SHI International Corporation for IT Equipment and Software, and those exceeding two fifty, Core Boiler and Mechanical for boiler maintenance, and Go Media for the two-row classroom refresh.
Any other items? Ms. Lewis, did I cover the diversity before?
I just had one question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
As relates to the Charity Hospital project, Ms. Lewis, I know that that is one development in particular that has potential to have a major impact in the supplier diverse community. I understand that there may be some issues as it relates to some of those subcontractors that were selected to participate in that project. If you could look into that for me, I'd appreciate it very much.
I will do just that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. Any other questions or comments?
How do we keep track of and enforce our goals as it relates to supplier diversity?
So tracking supplier diversity is why we have the software that I was just talking about. We use that tracking mechanism to, one, track who is in fact a diverse supplier, who has been, who has a contract awarded, what percentages are applying to which contract, so that we know what is in place. And then the staff is tracking with each contract that's awarded, if there is a request for a diverse supplier to be added to that contract, who is in fact using a diverse supplier or not using a diverse supplier. And as an example, with the Charity Hospital project, there is actually a person that has been added to that contract who is working specifically to ensure that diverse suppliers are being added as subcontractors, and that is a hire by the contractor, the prime contractor, to do that work.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, with your favor.
Thank you. Uh, the one-page sheet that we have in our folder, could you walk us through this? May I approach, I'll hand you, well, you know that. Can I bring it to you?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's the Utilities Initiative, they're going, that, that's, update is going to be provided on the Utilities Initiative.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Lewis? I, I don't think that requires a motion, and I believe this conducts our business. Would we entertain a motion to adjourn our committee? Sir, Ms. Lewis.
Second.
Second, Ms. Woods, all, all in favor? Vote. Thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Lewis. Chairman, it concludes our, my district.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. Supervisor Morrow, thank you for chairing the Property and Facilities Committee.
Thank you.
And I would ask that you convene.
Uh, Ms. Marilyn, please call the roll.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Arrington?
Here.
Mr. Damm?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mrs. Zuschlaugh?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, there's a form.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a request for the approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four, five-year capital outlay budget, and a request for first-year prioritized list for Louisiana State University. Someone do a quick little presentation. Ms. Lewis?
Mr. Morrow, I am going to let Mr. Lombardo do a little talking today, but, where?
Down.
I can't.
There he is.
There he is. I didn't want to deprive him altogether.
Good afternoon, members of the board. So you have in your packet the years' cap outlay request. It includes the ongoing projects, the new projects, emergency projects.
Excuse me, I don't believe we have it, Mr.
... today. Should be in the digital package.
Digital version.
I don't think it's attached in the, in the information for the meeting, too.
This is the material that we were briefed on earlier, uh, last week and this week, right?
Yeah. Unless it has disappeared, it's, it exists.
Yes, go ahead.
While they look, it includes the consolidated LSU system list for all projects. It includes thirty-nine projects of the variety of continuing, new, emergency, and auxiliary self-gen projects. It also includes the individual campus five-year plans for all campuses. Those are comprehensive lists of what their needs are, and those items roll into the overall system cap outlay list. I'm not sure, without the lists, it's hard to go through questions.
Yeah, I'm sure, we'd like to request to circulate that copy to the board, to the committee board, and we could have that before tomorrow's meeting.
We can certainly do that. We know we have the files, it's a glitch in the internal system.
Yeah, I think that would be the best thing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
You, you can entertain a motion to defer this item until tomorrow.
We can actually move to item two and come back to it.
It's Mr. Morrow's committee.
Yes, do we have a motion to defer, or, or do you want to come back to it, that we're going to have?
Yeah, you have to.
All right, let's go to the second item, just right now, Utilities Initiative Update.
So the second item is the Utilities Initiative Update, and at this point, we are knee-deep in the design and securing equipment for the project. A couple of the high-level things that we're watching closely is the design parameters and approving those parameters and equipment selection. Since we contracted at thirty percent design, we wanted to ensure that the final design is not value-engineered to the point where we're not getting what we are paying for. So we're watching that very closely. The other item is whether the utility infrastructure in the area of the LSU campus can keep up with our plans, as they need to make some adaptations as well while we're working through this project. I have our construction administration team with me who can go through a little more of the detail of the day-to-day, and perhaps can give us a grade on how we're doing so far. Mr. Tim Barfield with CSRS.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Mr. Chairman, other members of the committee and the board, President Tate, pleased to be with you this afternoon. So the project started construction in August, so we're very early in on the construction side. The construction started at the Highland Plant, we expect the main powerhouse to start construction in November. All the, all-in construction costs right now look, look good, they're, they're holding steady at one-hundred-and-fifteen-point-two million. That does have some contingency built in there, of course. We don't see anything at this point that, that gives us any cause for concern, but there are always uncertainties, particularly at the beginning of a project. All major equipment has been ordered, and that's a big comfort to me with the supply chain problems that we see across industries everywhere, and that, that did up, eat up some of our float that we had in the schedule, but we are still on schedule to complete in June of twenty twenty-four, so there was nothing on the critical path yet, but that is always concerning when you're looking at projects like this. The design and engineering is a hundred percent complete, subject to some review and some revisions that are normal at this stage, so if I had to kind of put my, you know, well, we're about ninety-five percent there on the design side. This is a design-build project, so there's always some stuff that's left to be done in the field, which is very efficient, one of the reasons why that's an efficient mechanism to use. Centryo has been operating the utility system since the contract was signed in March, so they're off and going. I think Tony mentioned the substation, we're still awaiting a study on whether the substation, inter-gi substation will need any upgrades. We expect that to be delivered in December, so there's some uncertainties until we get there. And then there's some efforts to try to get some efficiencies out of this project with the State Science Center project, it's really located between the two, the two powerhouses, the plant and the main powerhouse, which could add some efficiencies to the project, but there's some uncertainties about what that will mean. That's, that just went through capital A this year, capital outlay this year, and they'll be working on the more detailed design to give us some input on that. So there's some, there's, there's still a lot to be done at this stage, we're pleased with where we are, particularly in this environment. And before I go on to the next slide, I'll just see if there's any questions or comments on any of those items.
Uh, Mr. Barfield, our utilities have gone up over ten million dollars since we started the project. It's timely that we are doing this, because our savings will be greater, but we have a higher base. When do you anticipate we will start realizing utility savings over this next year and a half?
So I know the full realization will not happen until the project's finished in twenty twenty-four, so it's phased in. I don't know if there's a Todd Mann of our, do we have any?
No estimate at this time.
No estimate at this time. I think that's going to, probably, there's still some work to do on the construction phasing and everything based on where we are in design, so at the next meeting or supplementary, we can kind of update that for you and see if there's any indications at this time. All right. Excellent question, I think everybody's.
Some of the work required putting in new lines, when will that start underground? That'll be the most impactful part of it.
Yeah, that's probably the biggest challenge of the project, in terms of their, they're huge lines, they're forty-two-inch diameter lines that are going to go thirty feet down. We're using a boring technology, the big concern is the safety and minimal interruptions to the campus, and it's going to take about seventy days, we believe, so we don't have the final schedule yet. We were hoping to get started earlier, but we, we're not going to get started during the Christmas break, so that is one of those critical path items that is of the largest concern. But I do think, you know, it's the right technology to use in this case, and to protect the, the safety of the campus and the, the infrastructure of the campus, the trees and everything else.
Any other questions?
I have one more page on the diversity, supplier diversity, I think Mr. Williams alluded to that earlier, but I'll just give you a quick update. So the, the total estimated value of the contract is eighty-three-point-seven million dollars of the construction contract, I might add. So to date, we have committed fifty-eight million of that, so the diversity goal, diversity spend goal is twenty-two percent. Currently, we're at seventeen million, or twenty percent of the total contract value, but that's actually twenty-nine percent of the contract value committed to date, which is a little over fifty-eight million dollars. So we do expect to get to that point, to twenty-two percent by the end of the contract, and we've been doing outreach items, there's additional tools, I believe Ms. Robinson pointed to some of the tools the university's using that we're trying to integrate with. And there's also an operation and maintenance spend, about twenty-one percent, or seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of that three-and-a-half-million-dollar total spend has been committed to diverse suppliers, so we're making good progress on that front, so I don't know if Mr. Williams or anybody else has any questions.
I do. First, let me thank Mr. Chairman for calling for this update, and thank you for including supplier diversity in it. Chairman has always been a very strong advocate of the board's supplier diversity efforts, and I appreciate that, we all appreciate that. Um, I, I guess, first question I'll have is, it sounds like y'all are well on your way in terms of trying to meet defined supplier diversity goals, which is, which is very great and consistent with what this board has asked all the people we do business with. How did you arrive at twenty-two percent as a, as a goal, and particularly address, from, from my standpoint, but you're in the industry, not me, but it feels like a low number compared to what we see in other situations, municipalities, for example, et cetera. So walk me through how you got at twenty-two percent?
So unfortunately, I can't, personally, I was not involved in setting that goal, so I really can't tell you how that goal was, was set, so I don't know if there's anyone here who has that.
I can speak a little to it, I, I don't have the data in front of me, but given this is a major mechanical and a large percentage of the equipment being purchased comes from Fortune one-hundred-type companies, where the awarded equipment came from, for example, the Chillers or York Chillers, that's a multi-billion-dollar company that has their own distribution. Same thing can be said for cooling towers and much of the, the, the large equipment, so we had to focus on the areas that we had flexibility, like the services teams and the contractor, subcontractors that are working on the project.
So I guess what I hear you saying is, because of the nature of this contract, twenty-two percent is the best we can hope to do?
Again, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it was certainly a commitment of the, of the team to get that number as high as we could get it, and that, that's what I can tell you today. I can, I can get some more information on that.
That's fine, and look, I'm, I'm not unreasonable if you're saying, look, that's as high as we can get it, that's fine, I just want to hear you say, James, or board, this is, and, and I think you've said that, it was our goal to get it as high as possible, I want to confirm in front of everybody that this is as good as we can.
This has been a, certainly been a priority.
How, how, how is, do you know how information about opportunities on the project are communicated to vendors, so that you know that you can get, hit your goal?
Yeah, so as we put out in here, there's been some. Yeah, so, as we put out in here, there's been some events, on-campus events. There's a specific event, project-specific event that was held in July, and there's also coordinated with some of the other diversity, DBE initiatives that we, we have here. It's advertised. There's some features and newsletters, LSU Supplier Diversity Weekly Newsletter is one of the, the items that was done. I think this is part of an evolving part of what LSU is doing in the new database. The additional tools that are being implemented, I think, will help going forward, too. I know in, in our business practice across the board, it's a constant challenge to, to engage with the community, and we find that, you know, you have to take all those channels, and specifically the diversity events, and choosing, having contractors that are cognizant that this is a goal and very important, and having them reach out to their networks, too, which I understand has been done on this specific project, too.
And I understand what Lombardo said about how we get to 22% because some of this stuff is very niche, you know, we have a few people doing it, Fortune 100, I get it. In terms of construction and professional services contracts, which I think would get us away from what you're describing, and what, how many of those, how mu, how much of what you're doing, how many of those contracts have been awarded? And then how many of those contracts fall into DBE category? Because again, that should have the problem that Mr. Lombardo.
So, there's, there's nine separate DBE contracts, and those fall into women-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses, and some just have DBE designations on here. So, they could be veteran-owned businesses, things like that. I do know some of those that are DBE or African-American-owned. So, the civil engineer is an African-American-owned company. Architect's an African-American-owned company. And there's others. There's some suppliers, equipment suppliers, and others involve waste removal. Environmental Company is a, is a DBE, too. So, it's a really, in, in my experience, I think you're, you're seeing progress in the industry in general, but this is a very good cross-section of the different disciplines that are needed out there.
Sure, and I guess I'm, I'm, I appreciate that. And if you don't have the data, that's fine, and maybe we could get it at a later point. But I was more looking for, what's the total universe of professional services and construction contracts?
Oh, okay.
And of that universe, how much of that is going to women? You know, we're not just concerned about African-American-owned businesses, but women-owned businesses, veteran-owned businesses, anyone who's been at a disadvantage in our society. What, so that, that's, that's what I was looking for is in terms of numbers, how much of that?
I don't have that in front of me, but we can certainly give that to you on a supplementary basis. I think it's all there. I just don't have it in a format I could roll out to you, so.
So, yeah, if we could, if we could follow up on that, just in terms of here's the total professional services and contracts, here's how much of it's DBE, here's the total spend on that, here's the, you know, to sort of give some, some detail to the, to this impressive, what continued to be an impressive 29%.
We can, we can certainly follow up on that information. And we've worked closely with our office of supplier diversity, and there's been multiple meetings with Centrio, with, with our management team to get to this point. And so, I think we'll have some, some favorable data to share.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. I see on this supplier diversity sheet, it says it was, under outreach activities, featured section in the LSU Supplier Diversity Weekly Newsletter. Is that, that's an online newsletter? Is that something that's mailed to us?
I'm going to refer to Ms. Robinson on that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. That, that's, that comes from our office. Mr. Barfield is with CSRS. CSRS is the contractor that was hired to monitor the utility's modernization contract. He is not actually working on supplier diversity for the university. But, yes, but, and, and we can have, if you want more, but yes, the newsletter is sent out from our supplier diversity staff here at the university. Ms. Tiffany Robinson sends that newsletter out. We can have that sent to you.
I'd like to be added to the list.
Yes, we will add the board to the list.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Are we going to go back to the first?
Yes, Mr. Moro. I think the document is now in onboard, in your electronic board documents, and we are printing hard copies as well.
Can you go forward?
Mr. Lombardo, if you will proceed forward with the systems five-year plan, and these are our capital outlay priority plans.
Sure. So, in that package, we have the overall system project listing. It's in a format that is dictated to us by the Board of Regents and is in the format that they require to come from this board to their board next month for their inclusion in their overall higher ed package. It's also inclusive of the five-year plans for each instit, each of our institutions. And the, I mean, that is 100% overlap because every one of those projects in their five-year plan roll right into the system priorities list.
Anyone have any questions? I know this is a lot all at once. Do we need time to digest?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I see on here some capital outlay for LSU Dental School in New Orleans. Would you walk through the prioritization as it's outlined here in the, by these designated letters and what that means, what the priority is in terms of the dental school? And maybe add some comments about the need for infrastructure at the dental school?
Certainly. The prioritization, it, it's a collaborative effort with the campuses, working through their five-year plans, having conversations with them, understanding where we are in the delivery cycle of existing projects. We need to make sure that things stay high on the list that are underway right now to, to keep the momentum high so that we can get the projects off the list. It's very important to us to get these projects to closure. The amount of deferred maintenance captured, the, whether it's on their strategic, their longer-term strategic plans. If, if an interruption in whatever the project is, if it's an existing project that's getting repaired or renovated, if there is a business continuity risk for that campus, if it fails before we get the job done, all of that goes into the prioritization. Although, at the end of the day, most of these make it straight on to the list that goes to the, to the, the division. And in November is when they will meet with all of our campuses and the system leadership to determine final priorities. The, the most important feature at this point is that it's on the list, it's tabulated, it's got an appropriate price tag on it, and that it's into the E-Court system for the state.
Thank you. Can you tell me about the need for, like, have you seen the dental school lately?
I have. I defer to the, to the chancellor if, if you'd like to tell us a little bit more about the details of the project. Dental school.
So, the dental school, so, just to reiterate, we spoke about this at an early meeting. So, the dental school is the only dental school in Louisiana. It's about 70 students, supplies 75% of the dentists in this state. Main part of the dental school has it really undergone renovation for over 30 years. President Tate, along with others, have toured the dental school. I think they noticed that many of it, parts of it were in disrepair. Everything from the, sort of the clinics that are the public clinics where the students really work were fortunate enough to secure $2 million from the legislature this year and $1.8 million from Senator Cassidy to get $4 million for dental chairs. But the whole clinic space, other than that, needs to be renovated and updated, along with plumbing, IT, electrical. None of the bathrooms of the facilities are ADA compliant and major issues related to IT and to electrical. And again, for the only dental school in the state, I think anybody who's visited would say it really does need repair.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson.
You know, if we want to attract the best students, just like President Tate said, regardless of the discipline, we have to have great facilities.
And noted on the list, it is the highest-ranked new project on the list. So, it was not on the list last year, and it basically shot to the top of the list.
Thank you.
I have a question, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
The accessibility improvements, that's a Board of Supervisors funded, how did we get to the number over the five-year projection?
That is planning and design dollars only. It does not solve any specific ADA problem. We have some smaller funds in place that, that we do ongoing projects on a yearly basis. We meet with a student committee and with our Title IX office, as we are structured now, to go through those projects. And then we also do ad hoc projects for a specific student. If we identify the need at the beginning of a semester, and we will go out and surgically determine how to solve the challenge.
Is there a timeline in place for full ADA compliance?
Meaning full construction and everything completed? I don't know how you would put a date on that. It's, it's possibly in the 100-plus-million-dollar range.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question. In the first two items, and I apologize if we touched on this the other day, the emergency projects and the safety and accessibility, what are the biggest items in those buckets?
So, there's a variety of smaller infrastructure projects for the various campuses. And because of the way this entire process works with, so, so for LSU, we have to do one for you, one for you, one for you, right? And then it goes to Regents, and then they do that at the, at the entirety of the higher ed level. So, we determined a few years back that it makes no sense to put an individual small campus that, a project, or a small project, not necessarily a small campus, of a million-dollar project, for example, on a list that eats up a slot effectively. And so, we started, this was a long time in coming, working with the division to bundle these projects. And so, I don't, I don't know a specific one off the top of my head regarding the emergency projects, but there's a number of them. And then on the safety and accessibility improvements, that is planning dollars effectively.
I, I can give her one. The, the elevators at the law school are one example of the emergency projects. They have to be replaced. The, I think the chancellor's here, but the main elevator at the law school is not functioning, and a recruit was stuck in that elevator recently. So, it's on the list of emergency projects, but it's not one that we would put on a list by itself. But that is an example of an emergency project.
That is a good example. And also, those projects tend to get gobbled up in the deferred maintenance funding that is not on cap outlay. It's a separate Board of Regents' cap outlay. And current, currently, I think we have $20 million from the last legislative session that gets broken out across our campuses. And a project like that, if it's seen as the next imminent failure, it will get done that way and then fall off of this internal list.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Lombardo.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to accept the recommendations?
The capital outlay?
Just information.
It was just information?
Okay. All right. There are no further, further topics. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Mr. Damp? Orson? Hearing no objections, the committee is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Moro. I see the athletic director, Scott Wilbert, and I want to thank him for being here. Thank you for what you do. And I want to thank Supervisor Temple for chairing the athletic committee this year. I would ask that you call it to order.
You're welcome. Chair Sterns. Ms. Marilyn, get a roll call, please.
Mr. Temple?
Here.
Mr. Blossman? Mr. Armature?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Damp?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Moro?
Here.
Ms. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, as a form.
Thank you. Well, we really only have one item today. Ms. Williams, will you make this presentation?
Good afternoon. This afternoon, the athletics department has one proposal to increase baseball season tickets and parking and tradition fund. Taking into account the decision we reached, for purposes of background information, we considered various factors in conducting our diligence into what would be the appropriate way to proceed. First, we considered the renewal rates for our programs. Keeping in mind that baseball is the, has the highest renewal rates within our athletics department, specifically within our grandstand section, the renewal rates are exceeding 94%. The second thing we took into account was the season tickets. For our stadium in general, our season tickets, excuse me, season tickets are the most purchased tickets for the department, which is about 85% for our season tickets within Alex Box Stadium. The last thing we took into account was the secondary market. Considering that there was a sizable difference between what we were charging for our prices for our tickets and what was being garnered on the secondary market, we thought that there was room for us to increase our season ticket prices and still fall within what exists on the secondary market. So, more specifically, what we have considered for your proposal, excuse me, what we have considered, what we have in our proposal for your consideration are the season ticket prices on our general section. And the, the prices will range from $40 to $160. And again, these are for season tickets. Also, for the club level, we are looking at a range of $110 to $210. And lastly, for the suite level, we're looking at increases of $110. All considered, the additional revenue that we project we can receive based on previous attendance records would be approximately $771,000 on the ticket side. Now, we would add to that just under $69,000 for parking. And the breakdown for parking includes, for the lots, the Hall of Fame lot, an increase of $50 there, as well as the bullpen lot. We are proposing an increase of $100 for the champion lot. The last thing for consideration today, we are looking for the approval to streamline our process and have the ability to implement up to $25 increases per season for our parking. Again, this is not something that we're looking to do on an annual basis, not at all. Again, this is not something that we're looking to do on an annual basis, not at all, but we do want the flexibility to be nimble with the current conditions in the market, whatever it may be for that particular time, to have the flexibility to increase our parking $5, $10 without having to come back to the full board. Also, understanding that we would not operate in this space and approve any changes without first consulting and getting the approval of the athletics chair, working with the board of supervisor chair to make sure that there's approval across the board before we implement any of these changes. And with that, that concludes our presentation for this afternoon.
Any questions, Mr. Williams?
The baseball parking, I know you said it was a $50 increase. What is the price?
Yes, for both of the lots for which there would be a $50 increase, they would go from $250 per season to $300 for the season.
And the one with a $100 increase is what?
Moves from $300 to $400.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Well, Ms. Williams, I think that's an outstanding breakdown of where we are, and there are no further questions. I'd like to have a motion to approve this item. It's been moved by Mr. Damp, seconded by James. All in favor? They'd be known by saying, "I, I have disorder." Any other questions? All right. Ms. Williams, great presentation.
Thank you all.
With that, we'd like to move in favor of closing this item. Thank you. Mr. Damp, seconded by Mr. Brown. Okay. That, like to adjourn this committee.
So moved.
Thank you, Supervisor Temple. So that concludes our committee meetings. Without objection, we will be at recess until we reconvene at 9:00 in the morning. Thank you.